Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howell.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda, and the only thing on the agenda, is the city complex design project. Mr. Wells.
Thank you very much, Honored, and appreciate the opportunity for the directors to be here tonight. Want to recognize them and their support. We're really looking forward to having this meeting to have an open dialogue and discussion about where we need to go with this project. And what I'll ask at the end of my presentation is that you consider the information, the things that we discussed tonight, and then hopefully we can put it on the agenda at the next meeting for action on where we need to go. Or if we don't, that's obviously council's prerogative as well. So, the city campus design project has been going on for quite some time, but to kind of, I don't know what I'm doing here. Go through where we're at, I wanted to start out with talking about the role of council, the role of council and the role of city staff, and what we've been doing and what you've been doing throughout this process, so that we can look at how that integrates into the decision that you're going to make. So pursuant to the charter, you have a lot of different authority. Obviously, you get to appoint the city manager, city attorney, municipal judge, and soon the police chief. Council works through the manager or the other appointed official, doesn't work directly with employees. City council holds public meetings and represents the citizens in development and decisions on policy. And the way that the charter works is that council sets broad direction and policy, and then I'm required to follow that, or in soon-to-be-the-chief's case, he'll be set to follow the policy that you set for the police department. Council sets long-term goals, generally, one year with the budget process, we look at what are our needs. In a five-year process, we look at our comprehensive plan and strategic plans that we put together. And then beyond that, we look at the city vision and mission statement on what direction we need to be going. Because council turns over every four years or so, or has the potential to turn over every four years, it's important that we, you know, keep a solid vision for the organization, but that the intermittent goals follow the council. The role of city manager and staff, I hire and appoint qualified professionals to advise me and the council on issues related to policy and direction set by the city council. Professional employees provide expertise in areas where elected and appointed officials need advice and information in making decisions. I don't know everything, I'm far from it, and that's why I'm very grateful to have the team that I have, because all of them are professionals and have expertise in their own fields that help us be successful in what we do. I take direction from the decisions made by at least a majority of the city council, and I assign operational tasks and organizational goals throughout the organization through the directors. City staff helps engage the public on policy issues being decided by the city council. The role that I have and that the staff has is to really help the council in the decisions that you make. We can't make those decisions. The council makes the decisions representative of the people, and you are elected by the people. In the last election, there's approximately 2,000 votes, and you represent everybody, whether they voted or not, and there's about 12,000 people within the city. So it's important to keep that in mind. We take direction from council, and we're here to do what council wants to do for the benefit of the city. So that's kind of just an overview, and I'll get to why I think that discussion is important in a second. So, this is the history of the project, so I think it's important to understand the history that we have gone through to get here. I received a phone call yesterday from Representative at DOLA. He was concerned that we had individual citizens contacting him, asking about what we could do with the grant funds, and then also made some pretty bold accusations against me and against staff, to the extent that this has been kind of done under a shroud, that this hasn't been open to the public, that there hasn't been opportunity for people to provide feedback or input into the process. And I was very grateful that that representative set them straight, because they have been with us throughout this process since 2012 in providing us with funding for the studies and various other things that we've done to promote what the people in Fort Morgan want and what they've expressed in these public meetings. So, the important thing is that council represents the people, not an individual within the community that hasn't been elected. And I think that that's important for everybody to understand, that the council speaks as a majority on behalf of the people as a whole. So, the city council held a visioning retreat in February 2012, and one of the focuses was building centralized facilities, and was listed as the number-one priority by council members at that time. It was also a carryover goal from 2011. So this concept of having centralized facilities and replacement of facilities is not a new concept. It's something that council has been talking about since the time I became the city manager. We did two separate grants with DOLA under their program, where they get students from CU Denver to come out, meet publicly with citizens, meet with staff, and put together some conceptual drawings. And Brad Curtis, when he was the city engineer, underwent and did the first one. And part of that process included conceptual drawings, conceptual cost estimates, very rough. Now, the reason we went through this process was, DOLA funds projects based upon whether or not they believe the project is going to happen, and whether it's something that can be done. If you come to DOLA with a finished idea, say, "We want to do this," they're going to say, "Well, what have you done to prepare for that project?" There've been situations where DOLA has given significant amount of money to communities that wanted to, let's say, build a fire station, but then they didn't have the wherewithal to get it done, and they didn't do the front-end work. So, we received grants throughout this process to do various planning stages, and this was the first one. And this was kind of the concept that came up at that point, where would we put it, how would it be arranged, what would we do? At that time, the intended area was just north of Sol Nociente, we don't necessarily have to do it there, but that's generally where we looked at building this new campus. It would include a new city admin, new streets department, new parks department, new utilities departments, and the concept was never to build it all at once. And I think that's another misunderstanding that I've heard, that we're going to build a $39 million complex overnight, and that's never been the intent, that's never what we wanted to do. The idea was to phase it in. We know that tax money is scarce and that we need to use it appropriately, but we also know we can't build anything if we haven't planned for it and we haven't designed it. And again, that's part of this long process we've gone through. The report that we got back then talked about land purchase costs, road utility costs, admin building, so on and so forth, didn't come up to that amount that we did when we submitted our grant, because at that point, we hadn't done the big list of everything. And this, again, was students that were working with us to come up with a conceptual idea. This is from the Fort Morgan Times, when they did a really good story about the presentation that these students did on the project that they did for us. In 2016, this continued to be a priority for council. This report wasn't as detailed as 2012. We were trying to get a refresh of what we had done before, so that we could bring some concept ideas back to council, and so that we could look at what grants are available with DOLA to fund the design of the project. The project, we went through that kind of same process, had students come out. We didn't do a formal presentation to council. The student group that was in there was towards the end of the semester, and they graduated and wanted to go off and get jobs. So we didn't have them come in and do the presentation after that. But it did give us a baseline to go ahead and start looking at a potential grant with DOLA. These were some of the concepts from the 2016 report. Again, just concepts, nothing final, just some ideas of some things that could be done from students at CU. I think part of the reason why DOLA also has you go through the UTA process, is what it's called, is they want to see that the city can work with professionals in this process and get the people on the city's team used to working with the process with various professionals on the team. And I think in smaller communities, that makes a lot of sense. And I think in larger communities, they have that experience. So, there was a very public process as it relates to the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan, we had several public meetings. If you'll recall, we had Logan Simpson come in. We had public meetings where people provided what they thought was important for our community. They talked about their goals, of what they wanted to see. There is multimodal transportation as one of those goals. We have several goals that we're working on. Streets was a huge goal of the group, and facilities was a big goal of the group in that plan. So, we got direction from the community through that process, that new facilities and upgraded facilities was an important aspect for the community. That comprehensive plan went through several iterations, was presented to city council, had multiple people from the public involved in that process. We held several public meetings, we got feedback from the public before we finalized that, and council adopted it as our comprehensive plan. So, the city complex idea is supported by the comprehensive plan, which involved the public. So I want to go back to that point, that we've had some concern from some citizens that we have not been public about what we've been doing, that we have not been transparent. And that's not the case, this process has been going on for quite some time. We hold another retreat in 2018, 2019. This is really important, because the number-one priority at that time was a new field house. I think we all believe and know that the armory and the recreation center that we currently have is not only dated, but does not have the amenities that we need for the community. And when we looked at that field house as being the number-one priority, we thought, okay, how can we get a grant to help pay to design that? Always trying to do the best we can to leverage the money that we have in our reserves. We knew that GOCO doesn't fund these, we couldn't get a grant from GOCO. We looked at various other places where we might get grant funding to help us design just the field house. We thought about where we might put the field house. And what we decided to do was incorporate it in the overall city complex design, which would give us an ability to then leverage DOLA grant funding for the design of the field house and these other aspects of the campus. So the number-one long-term 2020 and beyond priority is replacement improvement of aging city facilities, which continues to be the direction that we have today. So we go and we put together a grant application. We are directed to do that. We go through and put together what the scope of this project would be. That's part of the process of getting a grant. You have to come up with what is it that you're going to design and build? And that's where the $39 million came from. We threw everything out there on the table and said, "What would this look like if we went for a grant?" To make sure that we had adequate money. And you always want to make sure that you go big going into the grant, to make sure you have adequate funding or get the most funding available. One of the interesting aspects of our grant was, we asked for a million dollars. But one of the reasons why we didn't get a million dollars was, some of the people on the board that give the funding were concerned that our number-one priority was the field house, and they generally do not fund field houses, they fund other components. So part of their concern, I think, was that that was our number-one priority, and we didn't get the full million dollars. But we did get $800,000. That was in July, we presented, we presented on July 17th. Steve and Ty, did you go to that? And Ty went all the way to Cortez, Colorado, to present to the board, and we were awarded. Let me move forward here a little bit. This is just going over the amount of the project. We de-scoped the project as well, as we got closer to putting in for the grant. But on March 20th, city council passes a resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant to DOLA to undertake the design of the new city campus. Again, it was a public meeting, it's in the minutes, it was provided. You know, the public was, the meeting was open to the public at that time as well. So we submitted the grant on April 1st, 2018. This was kind of our application, they went to Cortez on the 17th. We received a letter, you see here, with the award of $800,000. And as I said before, the field house was one of the reasons we didn't get the full funding. So we began to review construction estimates, project changes, to meet the new design funding amount, staff schedules, work session, retreat, to get council direction for project design in October. While I was out on leave, I think there was some concerns and some issues that were raised about whether or not we were being transparent to the public. And I think that was where council wanted some additional information, and we brought the information on what the history was at that point. We've updated that history a little bit more in this presentation. And that's the direction that we were given at that time, to continue to move forward. So with that, we bid the project. After that meeting, we bid the project in November, went out for an RFQ. And then in January, committee including council members and people from the public went through a very thorough review of the proposals and interviewed the shortlist of qualified firms. Many members of the committee commented on how professionally and fairly the process was handled by Steve Glamire. He did a wonderful job. He's disappointed he can't be here tonight, but I told him I'd take care of him. So, at an unruly January 15th council meeting, several community members stated objections to the new complex. This was after we had made significant steps towards moving forward with the funding, or moving forward with a group to design the project. And at that point, an individual offered an alternative scope and location to the project, which was never contemplated in the DOLA grant process, and that had been progressing over a seven-year period. A selection had been made to negotiate a contract with one of the qualified firms, but I am personally concerned that the direction, making sure that we understand the direction that council wants us to go. So we set a new work session tonight to discuss this. As I pointed out earlier, we had community members without the authority of the people at council contacting DOLA representatives to complain about city staff and ask about changing the scope of the project. This is problematic on a couple of levels for me and for the staff. First of all, we have a very good reputation with DOLA, and it's taken us many years to develop that reputation. When we put in for a grant, and we get a grant, we deliver. We build the project, we follow their rules, and they can come back and say, "Wow, that was a great project." Many of the projects they funded have been award-winning, and that's something that they're proud of, and it's something that we're proud of. I think they were taken back a little bit to see that, to have people from the community say that we haven't been following the process. Fortunately, our DOLA rep is very much involved with the process as we go through this and understands what we've done and what we've gone to. But, you know, the reputations of the individuals that work on these projects are their reputations, and it's important for them, when they go somewhere and say, "This is what I've been directed to do, and this is what I'm going to do," that they follow through with that to maintain those good reputations with the people that they work with. I know Steve worked with DOLA a long time in Delta, and part of his relationship with DOLA helped us get this grant. So, DOLA has contacted us to find out the status of the grant, given some of these people who have reached out to them with their concerns. And so I need to know that I have support of council to follow the direction that's been given through council through this whole process. So, we have a couple of pretty significant decisions that have implications that we need to make. We can't make a decision tonight or vote on anything tonight, because it's a work session, but we definitely want to have the discussion or answer any questions that you have. The first option is that we move forward with the long-planned project and say, "Okay, we're going to go forward with this." It will require, and some of the implications and issues that go with that, it will require us to continue to work with the community and with the individuals to resolve their concerns and address the issues that they're raising. One of the really important aspects when we selected a design firm was that they had a component to engage the public in their planning process. They, those concept designs that you've seen are not what the final design is going to look like. The group that we chose and are looking to negotiate with did a really good job in showing us how they would engage the public, and everybody felt very comfortable with how they would engage the public in their process for planning. So, the process is not complete, it's not done. We're still in that place where we need to engage the public, get their feedback, and make sure that we're building something that everybody can be proud of. So that's going to be one of the hurdles moving forward with this process. One of the other concerns that's come up, and that we have been looking at different ideas to address, is what do we do with the downtown? There's a lot of concerns that the downtown needs more businesses and needs more occupancy, and I share that concern. We have a new economic development person on board, she's doing a great job, and she's, that's one of her priorities. But one of the ideas and some of the things that we've discussed in some of the meetings I've had with staff is come up with a plan on how we can promote the downtown as part of this project. Several years ago, for those of you who are on council who recall, we did a facade improvement project, grant, where we put in the budget $15,000 to $20,000, and people could come and get up to $5,000 and a 50% match to improve the facade of their building. So we put real money out there, and there really wasn't any requirement other than you fix your facade, and we would cover 50% up to $5,000. We did that for two years, we didn't have a single person take us up on the money or get much feedback. Since then, we have the Historic Preservation Commission, which is engaged with the downtown businesses, and we'd love to use them as part of this process. But as part of the economic development process and redevelopment process of downtown, we need to get an inventory of what buildings are down there. And what I mean by inventory is go in and get as-built plans put together, so we know what we've got in each of the buildings. We, one of the things that I would propose in this plan is that we tell businesses that want to know what's in their building to go ahead and get somebody to come in and do that. I know that we've had a local, George Cromwell, do some work on some buildings that we've been looking at fixing up or replacing in the city, and he's done a really good job in putting together as-built plans. With those as-built plans, we would reimburse 100% of whatever that cost was. Then they would have something that they could take to a designer to work off of, to do some modifications in the buildings. It'd also give us an inventory, so that when businesses are coming to town, we know what's available within the buildings, so that we can help new businesses looking for a smaller location or something in the historic downtown to know what's available. The other part of the plan would be to take the people that want to put residences in their buildings. There are several buildings downtown that have upstairs components that are unused or underutilized. We really believe that a mixed use in the downtown is going to make the difference in fixing the problem of vacancies and foot traffic and shoppers downtown. And so one of the other things we'd look at is maybe doing a grant up to 50% of the cost for design for residential building within those buildings, so that, again, the owner has a little bit of skin in the game at that point, but we're assisting them getting that far in the process. And then looking at whatever the building design cost is, we could look at various ways to incentivize the construction through credits, like we do with some of the other businesses that come to town and build new. And we could look at other types of incentives that the council might be interested in to promote the construction of those lofts or other residences downtown. So those are one of the, that's one of the things that we've been talking about on how we can address some of these concerns about how do we address the issue downtown. The next issue is, what do we do with our current buildings? How do we use them or occupy them in a way that still makes good use out of a public building? That's going to be one of the things that we have to deal with. It doesn't have to be done right away. And I say that because right now, we, again, we're in the design phase. We're not building something immediately. Council's top priority is the field house and not necessarily replacement of this building or any other building. We will have to come up with something sooner on what we do with the armory, and there's been several really good ideas that have been proposed. One of those is donating it to nonprofit organization that is looking for facilities where they could promote what they're doing to assist us within the community. And there are several nonprofit agencies that work here in Morgan County and in Fort Morgan that do a lot of really, really great services for our citizens, that we could donate that to them, and they could take over that property and use it for their purpose. The other issues that are going to come up with this, you don't know all of them, but, you know, we know that a project of this magnitude is always going to have issues. So that's the first decision. Second decision would be to change course, figure out if you want to do something different, go a different direction. Obviously, we take our direction from council, and if that's the direction that you believe is best and what the community as a whole needs and wants, that's your decision to make. One of the issues that we would have is if we use this DOLA funding for a different project, meaning we re-scope the project, we would have to go back to DOLA and get permission to. to do that. That usually is a, is a red flag to DOLA. They don't like it. When you present something, they want to know that that's what they're, they are giving you the money for. That's why they go through these several steps and processes before they'll give you a, a grant. It could be that the scope has changed to the point where we have to return the grant, we'd have to reapply for the grant. Again, that limits our ability to get grants from DOLA. It doesn't mean it's impossible. It just limits that. And that loss of credibility, like I said, goes beyond just credibility to the organization, but there's also individuals whose individual credibility is impacted. So, one other aspect in changing course that I want you to take into consideration is that staff has invested a lot of time and effort based upon the direction of city council to move this forward in the direction that we have. We can change course and go a different direction, but I know that the taxpayers' money is really important, and if you think about the time and effort and resources that have been put into this plan thus far, that wouldn't just be the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that we'd be starting over on. We'd be starting over in a lot of ways with the staff time and everything else. So, that is the presentation of the history and what the decisions are. Obviously, we can't make a decision tonight. We'd like to have a conversation and discussion, and what, what it is, what questions you have, what questions you've received from the public, things that we can answer, what other issues maybe we're missing in this process, and then, as I said, if council wishes to put it to a vote next meeting, that would be fine. If you decide you don't want to put it to a vote, my direction is, at this point, to move forward. That, I haven't received any other direction from majority of council but to move forward, but I can tell you my, some of my staff are concerned that we're going to get down this road a certain direction, and then it, it's even more difficult to back it up and, and do something different. So, any questions?
Do they have any questions for Mr. Wells? I do have a, a couple of questions or comments, I guess.
Sure.
On the comp plan, when we initially did that, they were based on replacement of failing structures. It wasn't based on a comp, on a campus side of things, which we do have failing structures that we need to, to address. The armory has been identified as one of the, the key ones. We have a bat fertilizer facility listed in there. We have the street department buildings are, are dilapidating and deteriorating. We sunk a lot of money into trying to just get them usable and that. The fieldhouse was the main kicker on this when Josh was here, because it dealt, delved into replacement of the field, of the armory for the recreation, which was a, a big key, and I know Steve's probably anxious to get out of there. But, that was the big, big thing that Josh had pushed about wanting to go that route. And it just seems like it, it's kind of morphed from changing buildings and replacing dilapidating structures that we have to now it's come out that it's a campus complex replacing everything. And I know from day one, I've asked you continu-, or numerous times, what are the plans and what, what are we going to do with the buildings that you're looking at moving out of? You know, you've stated we've got plenty of empty buildings on Main Street and throughout the, the community, and we've got the old Hamlin Building over there. I mean, we have a lot of empty space currently. I don't think it behooves the city to go in and add to that portion of it. We got the DOLA grant. I don't have any intent on wanting to stop the DOLA grant. Greg Etto also called me last night. We had a pretty lengthy conversation, and he brought up some interesting facts. But, it comes down to, there is an initiative out there that's going to be coming forward, and it's not something that can be just blown off and, and not taken to heart, because it is going to be pushed, and it's more than likely going to happen. And when it does, if we've spent all this money on the design, where are we at?
And, and I think that's a very good question and a very good point. Where are we at if an initiative comes forward? You have to do, obviously, what the law requires you to do, and I think DOLA would take that into consideration of, you know, that, that we went the direction that council wanted us to go, which we said we were going to do, and the initiative was different. One of the issues, and, and I agree with the fact that the initiative could be a, a major problem, that's why we're bringing this to council, is definitely something you need to take into consideration. We have not had anybody pull papers necessarily to start an initiative, so there isn't an actual initiative on the table. The initiative would come back in once they receive or get the, the required number of signatures for the initiative. And then, the other thing is, we're not sure what that initiative is going to be. We've heard it's going to be an initiative to build something different. For example, we've heard things like, we're going to tear down the fire department, and we're going to put something on this building so that we can preserve the downtown. But, we don't know if that's what they're going to bring. We don't know what they're seeing, I guess that's, if there is an initiative, we don't know exactly what it's going to be. But, if that's something that requires us to wait and hold up and give them time, give them a deadline to do that, I think that's perfectly reasonable. And DOLA, the DOLA grant goes for eighteen months. You know, one of the things that we'd have to look at is the, the overall costs. I mean, when somebody gives you a bid and they say, here's my cost, it's usually good for about thirty to sixty days. It may be one of those things where we need to update what those costs might be as we go forward. But, the initiative is an important aspect to take into consideration, and I guess my only response to that is, we don't know what the initiative's going to look like. We don't know if it's going to be completely supported. We don't know exactly what they're going to want us to do. One of the comments that I heard was that we want an initiative to require a vote on whether or not we build the campus. Again, the campus isn't going to be built all at once, so it's really hard to match up exactly what, what these people are saying or what they're doing. So, but it, but it is a real, it's a, it's a real issue that needs to be taken into consideration.
Well, and that's the reason I bring up that point. I mean, because it is a long-term, or, a long-term, it's going to be months, because if they do it, it's going to be November ballot issue. But, it is something that we need to, to look at. I mean, if it passes and it goes to the vote of people, I mean, we've sunk all this in there. That was one of the questions that I did have for Greg last night when he had called, was if this comes about, changing the grant request from a campus layout to something other than that, is that possible? We would have to resubmit, as you stated. There's no guarantees on acceptance or, or that. It's going to be based on submittal. And then, a parting comment that he made is, don't make a decision based solely on the grant, whatever that was worth. So, I know that the, the fieldhouse, when we had our last meeting here, I don't recall the date, July, August, somewhere in there, when we had the meeting in here, I got the sense that there was a huge support from the community for the fieldhouse. It's something that we needed. I know Bob had made some comments about things that could be incorporated in there, and there was a lot of other people that had some very valid. So, I know that there's a huge support for replacing the buildings that are, are dilapidated and that. But, I personally, my big concern is this initiative that's looming out there, and, and where that's going to impact is, do we have to go, you know, I don't want to go sign RS and H, have them come in, start designing this campus plan, and then, as staff has stated, have to do a complete U-turn and put the brakes on, and how far are, are we into it and have to turn around and, and deal with all these issues? So...
Well, and I think that's an important aspect of what is this initiative going to look like, because, and I agree with you, what's this initiative going to look like? If it's a proposal that we move the fire station, for example, you're going to have to work with the fire department, figure out if that's even going to work. I know that I've met with citizens who have told me, when the fire department was placed there, that there was an extensive and expensive study that was done by an agency that came in and said, where is the best place to locate the fire station? And that was the place. So, you, you're going to have to probably go back through another study and say, okay, if we don't put this, if, if we're going to tear that down, we've got to find a new place to put a fire station. To build a new fire, fire station, it's going to be fairly, it's going to be very expensive because it has to be built to the new NFPA standards, which requires separate rooms for all of the full-time firefighters. And if we were going to do something like this, I think it would be really erroneous of us to build something that isn't for, in, in the long-term, a paid fire department. It's one of those things that, right now, we have the best fire department, I think, in the county. They do an excellent job, volunteers, but we've also had conversations at times that it's hard to get people to volunteer, and it's hard to get people to show up. And long-term, there's concerns that we may have to fund fire on a separate level down the road, and if we're going to do that down the road, it makes a lot of sense to build the, the building that will, that will fix that. So, that's going to be a whole separate process. So, what I'm saying is, if we know that's what they want to do, or if they want, want to have that conversation, I think that makes perfect sense to have the conversation, but I think there's a lot of education on why decisions in the past have been made and why, and what decisions need to be, or what needs to be done if different decisions are made going forward.
I guess my quest, go ahead.
All right, I guess, I just want to ask a couple of questions about the, the fire department and that study. What, do you know what year that was done? The study was done, that that was the optimal location? Because I feel like Fort Morgan's changed in the ten years I've lived here, and I'm sure in the twenty years prior to that. I mean, when was that study done?
The study was done, I should probably ask Bill. Bill doesn't remember. Bill's the one that talked to me.
That's scary.
So, it was, it's been...
But, if you look at the, and it could change. It, it very well could change.
Okay, so, we're talking fifty, sixty, seventy years ago? That's when the...
No, you're not that old, are you, Bill? Okay, okay. Bill's the one that poured the concrete for the building.
But, you know, but there was an extensive, when the people come in and try to call, you know, it wasn't just a, but a high situation, and there was a lot of time spent. The county was involved, the city was involved, police department was involved, the railroad tracks, for instance, was considered where is the best place to put it. They did it up here and then they, they restored it.
Okay. And then, the, the other thing is, even if, if we were to build, hypothetical, hypothetical, don't, if we were to build a new fire station, fire hall, whatever, and we wouldn't necessarily have to go to a paid fire department, because my understanding from the last report the fire department gave was, they were fully equipped or close to having thirty volunteers with four, six new got people within the last year. So, it sounds like we do have enough volunteer firemen, and we also have a lot of new people coming on to the fire department. Is that correct?
That's, that is correct, and that, that would be a ways down the road. I'm not saying that has to be done right away, or that we would build a department and go to a paid fire department. That's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay.
So, what I'm saying is that if you're going to build a, a building, and you're going to put the money into it to make it right, you do it now as opposed to the cost that it'll be later on.
Oh, okay.
Well, and to build a firehouse, no matter what you build, requires you have a living corridors built into it. I've got one in this one that was built...
Seventy years ago.
BB, before Bill.
Oh, it is, yeah. Yeah, we don't know when that was built either, of course.
No, BB, before Bill.
But, I thought you poured the concrete, so it couldn't be before Bill.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, I mean, the fire, I guess my whole point in that is, I think, regardless of what we do, if we go, you know, with the initiative approach or anything else, it's still going to be a lot of problem solving. You know, the other option that we have is to go ahead and design the city campus. I guess we have a lot of options. I just need to know what direction to go.
I just think with, with designing the complex with flexibility, that it could potentially be built on multiple sites. My concern is, I, I have a great deal of respect for any initiative that might be coming out there, but it's a hypothetical initiative at this point. Hasn't been done, no direction has been given from the, from that, and it's from a portion, potentially, of citizens. It isn't necessarily representative of the entire community. I mean, I mean, no initiative is. I mean, and that's why it gets put on the ballot. So, I think we have to be careful that we don't hamstrung this entire DOLA grant, this whole process, based upon, like I said, a hypothetical initiative for a portion of the community, and there are people out, there are people out there that don't necessarily agree with the initiative. It isn't that that speaks for the entire, you know, community. I think, I, I just think we have to be careful that we don't just stop our progress, because there's a dangling potential for an initiative. It, that, that just scares me, that we would stop all of our progress.
Nobody's talking about stopping it. This is an eighteen-month that we have. Why railroad it through without taking a look at it when it comes forward? Then we have it. If we get into it, this thing comes forward, where are we at? We've wasted time, money, and, and effort.
But, I think then, we've wasted, I mean, based upon it, we've wasted the RFP time, because, well, because an RFP, if you have a, a consultant that's going to come in and has said that will do this study for X dollars, and we wait seven months, nine months, you know, eighteen months, that cost is way different. You're going to have to go back out, do another RFP, because their costs are going to change. I mean, that's just, to me, that's just common business sense. You, you know, you get a thirty, sixty, ninety down, I don't know what it is for, I'm not an engineer by any sense, but, that, there's an expiration date on how long this consultant is willing to do this RFP for what they said they do it for. So, I just think we have to, we, we, we can't just sit and wait eighteen months.
Nobody said eighteen months.
I'm not, I'm not saying anybody said eighteen months. We just have been throwing out that the grant is eighteen months. So, I just think we want to be careful that, I, I guess I would encourage, if we have people that want to do an initiative, then step up and say, this is what the initiative would be, this is what we're looking to do, or bring it forward, talk to the council about what you would like to put in an initiative, so we can maybe avoid the whole need for an initiative. So, instead of playing this back-and-forth game of, maybe there's an initiative, maybe there's not, let's open a, and that's what I was hoping, we would have people here willing to come forward and say, this is what we're looking for.
Right. And I think we have people here that are...
And, and that's great.
Evidently, we, Barb is raising her hand, so...
And so, I, I think that, I think that's key, is that we, rather than waiting a long period of time, I think, let's try to work together on this with, maybe we don't need an initiative.
Barb?
I never thought I was the answer to somebody's prayer, but I do have some information. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. For twenty-eight years, I taught Advanced Placement American History. So, American history is something I know something about. And for sixteen years, I took high school students to what a program called Close Up, both to Denver and Washington DC, which meant for a week, we were close up with all forms of government. So, I... So I am very invested in the maybe delicate dance between elected officials and citizens who don't necessarily agree with them. I don't think of myself as a problem. I don't think of myself as unruly. And I don't think of myself and what we're going to be talking about as anything other than an opportunity for citizens in this town to vote. That's all it is. Well, Kevin Lindell, Councilwoman Lindell, recently called Lynn Deal and asked her, just what you've been asking all night, what's up? What are you doing? She's in Washington State seeing her only grandchild, and so I am the designated reader. And so I am going to do that. February 26, 2019, to the Fort Morgan City Council and staff from Lynn Deal, who is currently visiting her granddaughter in Washington State, therefore is unable to attend this retreat, or work study, or whatever it is. John Brennan, who was acting city manager, gave me a directive to bring an alternative plan for the historic city hall, other than abandonment. With the help of highly professional city planners, and one of the state of Colorado's most renowned historic architects, who renovated this city hall building, and the Morgan County Historic Sheriff's Office, we created an innovative preservation plan. Nan Anderson provided me with a conceptual design plan for a new city administration office to be built on Main Street, which would include the historic city hall building. I presented the plan to the citizens in the Fort Morgan Times on December 22, 2018. The response from the public has been phenomenal. I have had emails, phone calls, and personal contacts from people that I knew and people that I don't know, including a Morgan County Commissioner. The citizens have all been very supportive of the idea, and many are asking how they can help. The preservation plan suggests moving the Fort Morgan Fire Hall, as well as the city street department, out east near the city's new Center Point Plaza development. There are several substantial federal grant sources for the fire department, as well as DOLA to tap into for cost. The Fort Morgan Fire Hall building is outdated, and is in a compromised hazardous location, which creates a safety issue. Why has the fire department been left out of the city's high priority list in their big $35 million city complex plan? The ideal, available, and more compatible location would be east of the Fort Morgan Police Department to coordinate with the emergency facilities. The 100 block of Main Street property is more than sufficient for all the city administration offices. The Fort Morgan City Hall is the people's house and should be located for the convenience of people in close proximity to the business district, banks, postal facilities, as well as the Morgan County Administration offices. Building the new city administration offices incorporating the historic city hall would give new life to our struggling Main Street, and sets an example of the compatibility of a new building design integrated with historic architecture. Did I drop a page? I did somewhere, I think. Look, did I drop a page? Oh, no. Oh, never mind, I can do this one. Sorry. To further validate the concept of keeping city hall on traditional Main Street, I garnered the professional opinions from the cities of Parker and Windsor, two popular, fast-growing Colorado towns. Both towns purposely built their city hall next to the historic Main Streets, instead of locating them with their city utility buildings. Parker built a new city hall building, and Windsor renovated a school building for their city hall. Furthermore, whenever a significant national register property is in imminent danger of being sold off at a nominal price or given away, the Colorado Historical Society is an advocate to protect their properties. The preservation office expressed their disappointment in the city of Fort Morgan for considering abandoning the historic city hall with such an excellent opportunity to be expanded and to advance new development for historic Main Street. They also commented on the poor maintenance and disrespect for the Colorado Historical Fund's investment in the renovation, and could possibly ask for the, sorry, for the reimbursement of their near-million-dollar grant funding. Since the citizens of Fort Morgan have been flatly denied the right to vote on the city administration's proposed $35 million city complex plan, we have no other choice than to pursue a citizens' initiative to exercise our right to vote. It will not be a vote to stop the entire project. We fully support the new city utility buildings and the recreational fieldhouse. The city of Fort Morgan, as well as the $35 million, belongs to the citizens. It is not a separate fund balance for the exclusive use of the city manager and his city council support group. The vote to make this change in the city's quote, "one-stop-shop" unquote, plan serves a greater number of citizens than just the city employees and the city manager. There is now a clear, professional, affordable choice for the citizens to vote on. I have prepared a citizens' initiative petition for an ordinance with the help of an attorney. This initiative will be filed with the city clerk on March 8, upon my return from Washington. When approved, the petition will be circulated with full speed ahead. The final decision on where to build the Fort Morgan City Hall, the people's house, belongs to the citizens of Fort Morgan with their right to vote, which will be presented to this council by the power of the citizens' initiative. All right, then. The initiative petition. Petition representatives are Cheryl Lynn Deal at 615 East Beaver Avenue, Barbara Keenan at 302 Grand Street, Susan Agson at 202 Cherry Street. To the city council of the city of Fort Morgan, general statement of purpose. Shall the city of Fort Morgan adopt an ordinance requiring the city council to consolidate all the administrative slash services in the vicinity of the historic city hall located in the 100 block of Main Street, which would maintain the historic character of the city's downtown core? Whereas, the Fort Morgan City Hall is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is worthy of preservation, therefore, in the 1990s, the city expended considerable resources restoring the city hall to its original glory. And whereas, the city therefore expended additional resources to rebuild the entire infrastructure of Main Street, including sidewalks and downtown streetscapes with trees and flowers completed in 2009. Whereas, all these improvements were done for the purpose of revitalizing the core downtown area and supporting the success of the business and professional establishments located there. And whereas, continuing to promote the historic integrity of the downtown area is important to maintain the economic viability of the downtown area. And whereas, locating city offices slash services downtown strengthens the business, postal, and financial districts where people do their business, which brings substantial foot traffic to support the retail business. And whereas, by taking the lead in locating new construction in the downtown area, the city will demonstrate its confidence in the economic viability of downtown, which will, in turn, encourage private investors and developers to direct their resources to that area. And whereas, the city has accumulated funding in the millions sufficient to pay for a new city administration building in the 100 block of Main Street, instead of their proposal for the administration building to be located within a $30 million city complex east of town. Now therefore, be it enacted as a city ordinance, ordinance number, and then a blank, ordinance for the construction of an administrative slash service center. Section 1, construction of administrative service center. The city council shall locate all city administrative functions within the city block that fronts the east side of the 100 block of Main Street, and the west side of State Street, and the south side of Railroad Avenue, including the construction of a new building or buildings that are near or adjacent to and architecturally compatible with the historic city hall. And section 2, advisory role of Historic Preservation Board. The city council shall refer all capital improvements related to such a project to the Historic Preservation Board for its input in the form of a written report summarizing the board's consideration, research, and recommendations prior to expenditures for the same. So this is the initiative petition, which we will be seeing if the citizens of Fort Morgan are interested in it. It's that simple. And now you know. Thank you, Barb.
I guess I answered our question.
Yeah. I think that's a good answer to the question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Been answered.
Oh, no, it was perfect. It was perfect. You know, one of the things I'd like to point out is that we take direction from council, and nothing that has been done in this process has been for the benefit of me or for anybody on staff. We have followed the process, and we'll continue to follow the process as directed by council. So I don't know if there's any other questions. I guess to throw in one other thing, I guess, what we can do is talk to DOLA, and I know if this is filed on the 6th, we can do the timeframe of how long they have to get the signatures and when it comes back, and we can ask if we can have an extension, or at least talk to the design team and say, okay, could we have until this time to hold the price and everything else?
So is that 18 months, DOLA's window?
Yeah, from when it was awarded, so.
And then we were going to negotiate with our S and H?
Mm-hmm.
Was the final?
Yep.
When we had met with them? Is that correct?
Yep. Yep, and so.
When did that clock start ticking for when we were awarded the grant? Give or take, it doesn't have to be an exact.
I think, I think it's 18 months from the award is when the expected final thing is done. We got the award, I want to say, in July or August.
July 31.
July 31, so.
We're already seven months into it.
Yeah, but I think if council's got the concerns that we want to wait and see what happens with this initiative, we can definitely take that into consideration. John and I can sit down and look at, you know, what's the timeframe? And if they truly do set it in at the 6th, which is after, I think that's after our next council meeting, so we wouldn't have any, I mean, we wouldn't be able to address it there, but we could figure out what the timeframe is. Because, John, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, I know you've been looking at a lot of different statutes and laws lately.
Yeah, I don't know how long they have to collect signatures. I know they need approximately 850. And we, all we've seen is signature pages so far. She hasn't brought in any other documents to my office, so.
Okay. So the way that I understand the process goes, give or take, a little bit, is that once this is delivered to John, then he has to certify it within so many days, and then there's so many days to collect the signatures, and then if they collect enough signatures with that time, there's so many days for us to validate the signatures and make sure that they're all voters in Fort Morgan, all the other things, to make sure that it meets the technical requirements. And then at that point, we would know. But I don't know exactly what those timeframes are.
Could we have an agenda item on the March 5 meeting to kind, and hopefully, maybe, potentially by then, we'll know those timings?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, maybe that would be helpful for us, for that meeting to know that if they file on the 8th, and they have this much time to get signatures, and then we have this much time to validate. I would, I personally would like to see a timeline of what that looks like.
I would too. I would agree with that.
Okay. We can definitely do that.
Yeah, and I think it would be foolhardy to proceed where we have a declaration of intent. One thing that I'd kind of like to do is if Chief Frasco would just kind of address to us, since this area of expertise, I could see he's really excited when I bring it up, but some of the points that were brought up in this and everything, and see if he concurs with Lynn's assessment of that, it's going to be part of the decision-making process. And so I thought, why we happen to have him here? I just wondered if he would address this a little bit.
Or if he's not comfortable making that, without having opportunity to research. I hate to put him on the, you know, literally on the hot seat.
Happy to be up here.
Yeah. Yeah. I know how much you like coming up there. Just the, probably the thing that I just wanted your assessment, and I know it's just purely an opinion, and you might want to talk to other guys and everything, but one of the perceptions put forth by Lynn was that now that Fort Morgan has grown, and Main Street and railroad are busier, that that puts the fire department here in a hazardous position, as far as, I assume she was talking about pulling out with the fire trucks or all the traffic, or something like that. Like I said, I don't know about the logistics. That's why I wanted to pick your brain and everything, so.
At our last business meeting, we had a long discussion of, about everything that's been discussed, and kind of trying to get to the firemen's ideas or thoughts about the whole process. And there's a few that are definitely on board, saying, yeah, we need a new station. And there's a lot that aren't. There's a lot of history in that building. I mean, you know, it's been brought up, this is a historic building. I don't know how long the fire department has actually been there, but there's a lot of history there, and there's a lot of guys that would be disappointed to see it tore down. As far as the logistics, as far as pulling out on Main Street, we've never had a problem. And it's hard to say going forward, you know, if the city grew 10,000 people, how much different that would be. I don't want to say things that I probably shouldn't, but, you know, it's, it's just, it's hard to say what's going to happen in the future. And I don't think, speaking for what I heard at the other meeting, a lot of the guys are against it. There, you know, it was put forth that, you know, being next to the police department would bring the, bring, it would be a better situation. And, you know, while we work very closely with the police department, we're two separate entities. And where we are right now is, you know, compared to over in Center Point, is actually closer to where the expansion of housing is going to go, which keeps us closer to the expanding side of Fort Morgan. And that's my opinion, and not all the firemen's opinion.
Right.
But I would love to see a new station, you know, who wouldn't? But is it, you know, it's your guys' decision of whether that's the right thing to do. And we, as the firemen, will be more than happy to support any decision you guys make.
Okay. So as far as the foundation saying that this is hazardous here because of the location with traffic, you didn't necessarily agree with that? And you don't necessarily agree that being located close to the fire department physically is going to help anything as far as emergency services or anything like that? In fact, you feel that kind of moving away takes you further from the center?
That's correct. I don't think it's a huge benefit.
All right, well, thanks. Because I had no idea about any of that stuff.
Again, that's my opinion. It's not, I don't have any studies to back that up, but it is nice being, you know, you're close to the railroad tracks, so you know right away whether you're going to be able to cross, you know, if you're going south. You know if it's right there, it's where, you're not far from where they're proposing, but you still have a different perspective.
Chief.
Anything else while I'm standing here? Just getting warmed up.
Anyway, thank you.
Run away, run away.
Anybody else? I'll sign Barb in while you're there, too.
That would be forgery.
Hi.
My name's Jack Durnell. I live at 809 Cheyenne. Ron Shaver, Councilman Clint, and Councilman Kevin. What I'm here about today is in support of what Barb just talked about. I don't know if you know these three women, Barb, Sue, and Lynn, but they'll probably get her done. So I just want to let you know about, they're well-respected in the community. I just bought a new pair of walking shoes, and I have been recruited to help get signatures. And I love walking, and I love talking to people in the community. I love telling my story. You know that real well. So I want to tell a story on this one when we start doing this. I believe this is a good thing. I think it moves the city forward. Some of the firemen are split on this. I think it's a fear of moving sentimental values here, but it's better for the city of Fort Morgan in the long run. I know a lot of firemen were concerned about the retirement fund if they were to move, and I think that's been squashed. I think that's been taken.
Thanks.
Okay. The, okay, Ron. I looked at your role of city council here. The people of Fort Morgan is on top, and that was left off here. And when we did 2E, and I'm going to tie these two together, we were going to do an initiative, but I think all of you voted to go ahead and do that. I think it was seven to zero, to go ahead and put it on the ballot. That could still be an option here. And that way, you have a little bit more control, which you probably did on 2E also. So I just wanted to bring that up. The fieldhouse is really important. I know it's a big concern of Allison's and the rest of you that's on here. And I really appreciate Clint Anderson's comments and questions earlier, because I had some of the same questions. And so anyway, that's kind of where I'm at on that. So I think we look forward to turning the petition in and start doing it and get an answer as soon as possible, so you guys know which way to go, because we need to move the city forward. And I think that one way or the other, this needs to be answered as soon as possible. So I think if council would look at it, and you guys could make a decision sooner on this here, if you want to work with this group. If not, then we will get, we will get the signatures. There's no doubt in my mind. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Jack.
Anybody else?
So my direction at this point is to bring back timelines at the next meeting for council to consider a potential extension of when we start negotiating with RSNH.
Well, and what the timeframe is for the DOLA.
For the DOLA grant, yeah.
And then what their timeframe on the initiative is, I think, is what we were looking for.
Yep.
At least, I think, that's what.
I mean, I know that we talked about March 5, that meeting. Is there a way to push it off to the 19th? Or if I'm the only one that, I just think that way that we have the, they can, because suppose, it's March 8 is the date I heard. That way, we have.
I don't say make a decision. I would just like to see a timeline for, if they turn it in on the 8th, they have this much time. It's not making a decision. This is.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We would just get that information. It'd be an FYI on.
All right. It's just informal. There's no action.
Right. We just present it for discussion.
And Jeff?
That's my misunderstanding, I guess.
I'm really interested in learning what this firm, when we do start engaging with them, you talked about how they have a really excellent plan of how it's going to engage citizens. And I think, I don't want to belittle the importance of citizens' rights to vote on different things, but I think there's voting as a way of engagement. But when we learn about how citizens can engage really formally with this firm, I think that will be really helpful for citizens to learn, because there's just a lot of power in being able to sit in a room with an engineer and to share ideas, and that's a lot bigger than just checking a box, so.
I just looked at Brent, had to let him juggle.
You can laugh at me too, if you want, Ron. So I think I'd like to see that back here for everyone to learn about what that engagement really looks like, and.
So would you like a representative of the firm to come in and talk about how they intend to engage the community? Is that what you'd like to see? I just want to make sure that I meet your expectation. Or would you like me to kind of go do an overview of what?
Good question. If it's in their travel budget.
We don't have a contract yet.
I think it'd be good to hear from them.
Yeah, I think it'd be really fun and like have, I want, because one thing I want to avoid is like this us versus them. I deeply respect our community members and I deeply respect, ugh, sorry, respect our staff. And I think kind of pitting it against each other, like staff versus the community. And I really loved learning about the history of the project and that there have been seven years worth of time for community to engage. And I love the plan of keeping, of really considering how we use these historic buildings in the future. And anyway, I just think there's tons of dialogue that needs to happen, and it will die if we have sides.
Yeah.
Because there aren't sides. It's just Fort Morgan. And I think all of us have a deep love of Fort Morgan, so if we could have them come and talk about the engagement piece, that would be really helpful for me.
Yeah.
That was a big part of the interviews with all of the ones that we interviewed was the potential for this and how was their public engagement was, it was directly one of the questions that was asked of all the ones that we interviewed.
So do we have responses from this firm we're talking about in their RFP? Because I'm sure that's part of their courting us to accept their proposal. I mean, if we can't get them here, I understand we don't have a contract, and that's, you know, that's a thing asked.
We'll be able to get them here.
Get, you know, could we at least get what they presented in their proposal as far as specifically about the community engagement?
Yeah.
Because I would wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Howe. I think figuring out a way to not make this a pitting, you know, making it a collaborative effort versus a one side or the other, I think, is the best, absolute best answer to this than, you know, I think both kind of are nuclear options, and I'd like to see us find something in the middle.
And one more point. I just want to make sure that the community knows that as, since it is such a long-term project, that all of the departments are being considered. It's not like the fire department has been ignored and they're hated, you know.
Right.
That the fire department is excellent and they're being considered, but since it's, each facility has to have so many different variables considered as far as timeline and funding. And then Mr. Wells mentioned that the upgrades that will be needed are substantial. So there's just so many different pieces, so we can't boil it down and just point fingers and say this group wasn't considered for the first round, so they're scum. Like, I just really don't want to.
I just have a little bit of a thought that you have.
Because, yeah, the staff, our city staff and our directors are so excellent. I just, I respect them, and they help us make some really complex decisions. So when, yeah, I respect the letter absolutely that was read tonight for that petition, but I don't think it was fair how they portrayed the city's treatment of the fire department.
And we have a really good relationship with the fire department, and we never leave them out of decisions that affect them. And they're very active and vocal. We've got a great chief. We've always had a good chief that has sat in those, in that role and has been engaged. And, you know, we can definitely work. And I agree with you, Councilmember Howe, that this really is about Fort Morgan as a whole. It's not about sides. And I agree with what Mr. Darnell said. The people are at the top, and you represent the people, and we work for you. And we want to make sure that we are doing that, that we're conducting our role in doing the will of council as a majority, and that we're being responsive and helping engage the community for the benefit of council. That's our job. That's what we're here to do. So I appreciate you bringing that up. And if it's been perceived as this side or that side, that's definitely not where our staff is at. We are here to work with the council and with the community to make this happen, so. I can talk all night. You guys know that, but I know you don't want me to. Time's up.
Any other comments or?
Last call, huh?
Yep, last call. All right. I'm going to use something I don't ever get to. We're adjourned.